Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 28th Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business will be the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, move on to the roll call members. Madam Kirk, your roll, please.
Sure. Mike Kincaid.
President.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Sandra Jasonowski.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
Here.
Sierra Messenger is absent this evening. And Rob Hawkins.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. My Tony is still working on the minutes. We'll get those at our next meeting. We're starting tonight off with some swearing ins. We have swearing in of a new Lebanon firefighter, as well as our Lebanon Fire Department Merit Board. So we'll start with the swearing in of firefighter Ethan Shepherd, chief.
Good evening, everyone. Like the mayor announced, it's a very exciting evening for Lebanon Fire to get to swear in a new recruit along with our inaugural five-person merit board. We'll start off with the swearing in of Ethan Shepherd. Ethan comes from a firefighting family. His grandfather Tilford Shepherd proudly served the Thorntown Fire Department for over 30 years. And Ethan's Uncle Matt is a battalion chief with the City of Lebanon Fire Department. We're extremely proud of the Shepherd family and happy to have Ethan on board. So I'd like to invite up Ethan Shepherd.
Merit Board watch. All right. Sure. Other way. There we go. There is your right hand there. Yeah, right there. Yep, there we go. All right. All right. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ethan Shepherd.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And all laws and ordinances.
And all laws and ordinances.
Of the City of Lebanon.
Of the City of Lebanon.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And obey all true orders.
And obey all true orders.
Of the officers appointed over me.
Of the officers appointed over me.
As a member.
As a member.
The Lebanon Fire Department.
Of the Lebanon Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Next, Ethan will be leading the National Anthem for us this evening. Just say a few words to.
Yeah, I just want to say I'm very happy to be here. This has been kind of a lifelong dream for me. Ever since I was a little kid, I was always running around in turnout gear and playing around the firehouse. And I knew it was somewhere that I always wanted to end up. So I'm extremely grateful for the opportunity to serve this city that I've been very fortunate to call home. And I promise that I will give it the best of my ability and I'll make you guys proud. Thank you.
Ethan is currently in his third week of the Northside Fire Academy, going through his EMT school. He'll begin fire school on September 2nd. They'll begin with hazmat, then firefighter one and two. Next, we will be swearing in the inaugural merit board for the City of Lebanon Fire Department. This is something that Mayor Gentry and I have been working together on for many years. This bipartisan board will serve in hiring, promotion, and discipline within the department. It adds layers of transparency and de-politicizes our department. We are very excited about this. And it protects our firefighters under merit law. We have five members. The first member we are going to invite up is Abby Gentry.
This'll be a little tricky for me. I've never had to hold the Bible too. Raise your right hand. There we go. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Abigail Gentry.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That my duties as a member. That my duties as a member.
That my duties as a member.
Of the City of Lebanon Fire Department Merit Board.
Of the City of Lebanon Fire Department Merit Board.
Will be faithfully and impartially discharged.
Will be faithfully and impartially discharged.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
Upholding the United States Constitution.
Upholding the United States Constitution.
Indiana merit law.
Indiana merit law.
And ordinances of the City of Lebanon.
And ordinances of the City of Lebanon.
Congratulations.
Next, I would like to invite up Michelle Thomas.
Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Michelle Thomas.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That my duties as a member.
That my duties as a member.
Of the Lebanon, City of Lebanon Fire Department Merit Board.
Of the City of Lebanon Fire Department Merit Board.
Will be faithfully and impartially.
Will be faithfully and impartially.
Discharged to the best of my skill and ability.
Discharged to the best of my skill and ability.
Upholding the United States Constitution.
Upholding the United States Constitution.
Indiana merit law.
Indiana merit law.
And the ordinances of the City of Lebanon.
And the ordinances of the City of Lebanon.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we would like to invite up Steve Day.
Hi, Steve Day.
Hi, Stephen L. Day.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That my duties as a member of the City of Lebanon Fire Department Merit Board. That my duties.
That my duties.
As a member.
As a member of Lebanon.
City of Lebanon. Will be faithfully and impartially.
Will be faithfully and impartially.
Discharged to the best of my skill and ability.
Discharged to the best of my skill and ability.
Upholding the United States Constitution.
Uphold the United States Constitution.
Indiana merit law.
And Indiana merit law.
And the ordinances of the City of Lebanon.
And the ordinances of the City of Lebanon.
Congratulations.
Next, we would like to invite up Rob Kern.
I state your name. I, Rob Kern. Do solemnly affirm, do solemnly affirm that my duties as a member, that my duties as a member of the City of Lebanon Fire Department Merit Board, of the City of Lebanon Fire Department Merit Board, will be faithfully and impartially, will be faithfully and impartially discharged to the best of my skill and ability, discharged to the best of my skill and ability, upholding the United States Constitution, upholding the United States Constitution, Indiana merit law, Indiana merit law, and the ordinances of the City of Lebanon. And the ordinances of the City of Lebanon. Congratulations. Thank you.
And last, we would like to invite up Adam Klingensmith.
That's a good one. All right. No, it's okay.
Nope.
Yeah, if you can, sure.
I state your name.
I, Adam Klingensmith.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That my duties as a member.
That my duties as a member.
Of the City of Lebanon Fire Department Merit Board.
Of the City of Lebanon Fire Department Merit Board.
Will be faithfully and impartially.
Will be faithfully and impartially.
Discharged to the best of my skill and ability.
Discharged to the best of skill and ability.
Upholding the United States Constitution.
Upholding the United States Constitution.
Indiana merit law.
Indiana merit law.
And the ordinances of the City of Lebanon.
And the ordinances of the City of Lebanon.
Congratulations. Thank you. Yeah, we'll stay in the recess till the fall of gavel, about five minutes. All right, we'll re-adjourn. Move on to old business now. I have nothing on my agenda for old business, anything from the council? Okay, new business then. First item up here is ordinance 2025-33. This is an ordinance amending ordinance 2018-09. This is concerning the use of golf carts on Lafayette Avenue. This ordinance is on first reading from Councilwoman Jasnowski.
Basically, the same as last time. I was, I would like to see Lafayette Avenue deleted off of that current, current ordinance 2018-09. Because of the way the city's growing, we have, and people are writing on it anyway, but the city is growing and it will help them be able to get to different parts, especially the park and things like that. So that, that is what I would like to see happen. And sooner rather than later for that. I don't know, I mean, if there's anything anybody else wants to say, whether it's good, bad, or ugly, I'm open to that. I just would like to see this happen.
Yeah, let's have the ordinance read and then we'll have further discussion. Is that fair? And then we'll, and then move forward with that. So Tyler, would you mind reading the ordinance, please?
Certainly. This is ordinance 2025, 2020, or 33. Whereas the City of Lebanon is a duly formed municipal corporation within the state of Indiana governed by its elected mayor and common council, whereas the city pursuant to IC 92112 and IC 92113A14 may regulate the use of golf carts within the jurisdiction. Whereas on July 23, 2018, the city adopted ordinance 2018-09 governing the use of golf carts within the city's municipal boundaries. Whereas pursuant to ordinance 201809, the code of ordinances for the City of Lebanon, Indiana currently prohibits the use of golf carts on Lafayette Avenue. And whereas the city seeks to amend ordinance 201809, codified as City Code Section 75.06 in the manner set forth herein. Now therefore be it resolved and adopted by the common council of the City of Lebanon, Indiana as follows. The foregoing recitals are incorporated herein as by reference. As of the effective date of this ordinance, the entirety of Section 75.06 of the City of Lebanon, Indiana's Code of Ordinances is hereby amended and replaced to read as follows. There shall be no golf cart traffic permitted upon any state highway located within the city, specifically State Road 32 and State Road 39. Golf cart traffic shall also be prohibited on Indianapolis Avenue. In addition, no golf carts shall be allowed to travel on city sidewalks, multi-use paths, or trails. Section 3, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its passage by the city council, approval by the mayor of the City of Lebanon, Indiana, its publication in accordance with law, and upon passage of any waiting period, as well as provided by the laws of the state of Indiana. And Section 4, all ordinances or parts thereof in conflict here with are amended or repealed.
Thank you, Tyler. Or it's been read on first reading. Discussion from council.
I'll just say that I'm in favor of that ordinance.
Read. Yeah, as you can read, tell by the reading too, there's no, no mention of, it's clearly prohibited on sidewalks and trails. That was kind of a discussion point, the last one. So strictly is just removed in Lafayette Avenue, which Sandra appropriately brought up because the way the state has changed the interchange there, and that's no longer a direct exit off of the interstate, the safety is now less of a concern there. So I guess any further comments, questions, concerns? We, I'll do public comment if you want to make a motion to move to second reading, don't you have thinking? Okay. Any public comment then concerning ordinance 2025-03? Seeing none, would you like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules tonight and have the second reading tonight.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 2025-33 to move it to second reading. In order to do that, it must be unanimous. So all those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Keith, so you are opposed. Okay, so, okay. So Keith is opposed to suspending the rules, so that motion does not pass, unfortunately. Yes?
I thought that it doesn't have to be unanimous. It can be a super majority.
As a point of clarification, the motion to set aside the rules to do it in one reading does require unanimous consent. It's the approval thereafter if the rules are suspended.
Okay.
Yeah. So unfortunately, it does have to be unanimous to suspend the rules. So.
So we'll do the second.
We'll take that up in our second reading. Make that understandable. Yep. Okay. So we'll take that up at our next meeting, which will be August 11th. Thank you, Tanya. Okay. Next item up here is an ordinance 2025-24. This is council to consider the, a vacation of unimproved right of way adjacent to 703 and 715 Edgewood Drive, and this on first reading. Then.
All right, get plugged in here real quick. As, thank you, Mayor. Members of council, good evening. What is before us tonight is a request to vacate unimproved right of way. So I'll quick run through just a handful of slides here real quick. So this is the Edgewood neighborhood and the right of way in question is what you see right here in the center of the screen. As you can see, it is unimproved. It's been grassed and it's essentially been used by the adjacent property owners since this was platted in, in the 1950s. So when the section one of Edgewood was platted back in the 50s, there was an expectation that there would be future sections of Edgewood that were developed to the east here. As, as we all know now, that did not happen in a timely fashion. And the reason they had set aside this, this right of way access was because that there was a home up here on Fordice until Cedar Ridge was developed. So there was no access from Fordice Road to this area. So when Fisher Homes developed Cedar Ridge, they wanted to have their own access point on Fordice, so they purchased that property and then created a new entrance to their neighborhood. And so this right of way was not needed to provide access to this area. And as you can see, there's no way to provide access through there now because there are homes to the east. And so we were approached by the two property owners to the north and south of this right of way about vacating this. And this is a, an exhibit showing how that would take place. It's essentially a 50-50 split. The north half will go to the north property owner and the south half will go to the south property owner, as you see here. When reviewing it with our technical advisory committee group, there is one additional step that will need to take place. Let me go on to the next slide here. So as you can see here, this is just a map of the utilities within this area. This red line is a water line that was stubbed and it anticipated to go further east when that developed. And since that is not needed, the utilities will just cap this off back here at the meter in the street. And so that, that will be gone. But there is an overhead power line that runs across the eastern end of this right of way. And on this next slide, I'll show you, zoom back in here. Those two adjacent lots have an eight-foot utility easement that runs along the backs of their properties. And what utilities has asked is for that eight-foot utility easement to be recorded across what would be the vacated right of way. So we've talked to the property owners about working with their surveyor to write legal descriptions for that. And just once, once the vacation ordinance is adopted, then they will just have to subsequently file the easement dedication documents as well to, to allow the Lebanon utilities to have access across the back there where they have those power lines. So that's a quick summary of that. And I'd be happy to answer your questions if there are any.
Are we donating the land to the homeowners?
Vacation essentially is saying that the city does not need it for right of way. So yes, we are basically transferring the property to those owners.
Yeah, whenever we determine, so vacation essentially determine the city has, no longer has any need or future need of it. And so the way it's written is that essentially it's split between the two adjacent property owners. So. Any further questions or concerns? Okay, Tyler, mind reading that ordinance for us, 2025 to 24? You had the highlights too, if you want.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, this is ordinance 2025-24. Whereas the City of Lebanon, Indiana is a duly formed municipal corporation within the state of Indiana governed by its mayor and common council, whereas it is the duty and responsibility of the council to maintain public rights of way for the benefit of the citizens of the city and to vacate those no longer needed for the benefit of the public. Whereas there's been filed for the City of Lebanon Plan Commission petition, docket number 2530, to vacate a portion of unimproved street right of way, specifically the 50-foot unimproved street right of way between 703 Edgewood Drive and 715 Edgewood Drive collectively real property, real estate, more accurately described in exhibits A, B, and C to this ordinance. Whereas the Plan Commission voted 8-0 to send a favorable recommendation to the council for its consideration. And whereas it has come to the attention of the council that the request herein described is no longer necessary as a benefit to the general public and should be vacated. Now, therefore be it ordained by the common council as follows. Pursuant to Indiana Code 36925, the city has the authority to vacate public rights of way and now finds that the public rights of way identified in exhibits A, B, and C attached here too, and incorporated by reference, is no longer needed for the benefit of the public. Section 2, after a duly advertised and public notice hearing pursuant to Indiana Code 367312, the council finds it proper and necessary to vacate the public rights of way identified in exhibits A, B, and C. Section 3, the conveyance of real property described in exhibit A shall be to Munib and Hidjeda Mazik. And the conveyance of the real property described in exhibit B shall be to Zachary Bowling. Section 4, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect in accordance with Indiana law.
Tyler, the public hearing was scheduled for tonight, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So this time then, open the public hearing on ordinance 2025-24. If any public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments for three minutes if possible. Seeing no sudden movements, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2025-24. Any council discussion?
No, sir.
Okay. With that then, we will take that up for second reading on our next meeting, which will be August 11th. Okay, next item up here, this is Resolution 2025-22. This is concerning the SCBA lease payment, Tanya. Or Chief, sorry. Should have realized that.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This additional appropriation represents our annual SCBA payment, which we've chosen to do in five-year increments.
Tanya, mind reading the resolution for us?
Duly formed municipal corporation within the state of Indiana. It is the duty and responsibility of the council to maintain fiscal integrity of the finances of the city. It has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. All additional appropriations require public hearing, of which the council has served proper notice. Be it resolved and adopted by the City of Lebanon council, Resolution 2522 is to appropriate funds for services and charges as Chief Batts just described for the SCBA equipment from Fund 2240, the lit fire line.
Tool now.
And it's the $81,182.
Any questions for Chief from the council?
Just for the public, tell them what the SCBA is.
That is an acronym for self-contained breathing apparatus. So that is the tank, the regulator, and the mask that we use in adverse environments.
This is just an upgrade or addition to equipment or?
This was an upgrade from a system that was approximately 20 years old.
Okay.
We began this process along with Seinsville and the Whitestown Fire Department, testing different manufacturers. This was chosen by the three departments and we received some buying grace by combining all three purchases at the same time.
This time then, open the public hearing, Resolution 2025-22. If any public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments for three minutes if possible. Seeing none, close the public hearing on Resolution 2025-22. Any further discussion?
Resolution 2025-22.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second from Rob, third from Sandra. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that is approved. Thank you, council. Thank you, chief. All right, and next up, Tanya, this one's yours, this Resolution 2025-23. This is professional services for Kaiser.
Right, this, to explain to everybody, we have a capital assets plan. And the last time we updated it, or actually began the plan, was 2018. And State Board of Accounts was here about a month ago and asked us if we could please update the records. And that's what we're going to do with this $19,500. This also includes, which we did not do before, but this includes an annual update to that capital asset plan, which, why we didn't do that before, I don't know. But we're going to do it now. So that's the request. And I'll go ahead and read the resolution unless there are questions.
Question, concerns for Tanya?
No man.
Okay.
Resolution 2523. Resolution of the common council for the additional appropriation. It's the duty and responsibility of the council to maintain fiscal integrity of the finances of the city. It has been determined that it's now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. All additional appropriations require public hearing, of which council has served proper notice. Be it resolved and adopted by the council of the City of Lebanon, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of Fund 1101, which is the general fund professional services in the amount of $19,500.
Any questions from council? Okay, this time then, open the public hearing, our Resolution 2025-23. Chief, public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments for three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2025-23. Any further discussion from council? Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Approve Resolution 2025-23.
We have motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Sandra. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Thank you, council. All right, that concludes what I have for new business. Anything from council? Okay, move on to claims. Attention, motion concerning the claims.
Motion to pay the claims.
Motion to pay the claims from Rob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, any further announcements or discussion?
Yes.
John?
I just want to say I've received multiple positive inquiries and requests for a three-way stop sign. And with those residents that have reached out to. stop sign. And want those residents that have reached out to know that we are looking into this request, as we have been, as we're now getting ready to join together an older home development to a brand-new home development that currently has no residents, as a safety issue and for all new residents and children in the, in the area. I've spoken with Lebanon City Engineer, Kevin Krulick. They're going to take together, or put together a study for a three-way stop sign at Grant Boulevard and Angely Way. Currently, it's only a Grant Street Boulevard stop sign. And the residents in the area are requesting that it be moved to a three-way stop sign. So again, I've spoken with Kevin. They're going to put together a study and see what we can come up with.
Kevin?
Thank you very much. Just a little bit of elaboration on that. We will be using projected traffic data for the neighborhoods as they build out. But in order to determine a base underlying traffic counts, traffic movements in that intersection, we will be counting that intersection. But we can't get accurate counts until the kids go back to school, which is just a couple of weeks away. So once, once school is back in session, we will count the traffic through that intersection and then develop a warrant analysis based on the future build-out of the rest of Angely Gardens, as well as, it'll probably include a portion of the Sections 4 and 5 of Auburn Meadows as well in that calculation.
One of the things we discussed was the study itself. I'm, I'm not up to date on how they do the studies. I don't understand how they can do a study where there's a, a new resident area with no one living there. But Kevin's assured me that there's a study that they can do that will be able to forecast how we can hopefully put a three-way stop. I've talked to the residents in and around that area, some that are right there at those particular areas that are very concerned about this. So I thank Kevin and his group for putting together this study.
I would like to add, too, when they put in the three-way stop over on Lafayette Avenue where it intersects with Riley, huge help.
Yeah.
Huge help. Ever since they put that in, it's been so much better there. You don't have to worry about trying to beat everybody. You know, they're trying to dart in front of you. It's, it's been a big help. And if, if that area needs it, I can see why it would be a big help.
Know if I mentioned, but right now, the only stop sign we have, and it was brand-new for this older addition, is on Grant Boulevard. And the new addition currently has no stop signs. Again, nobody lives there.
All right. Thank you for your update, John. Any further announcements or discussion? Okay, with that, we're intending a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn from Dick. All in favor, or second?
Second.
Second from John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, our next city council meeting will be August 11th at 7:15 PM. We are adjourned.